That's just wrong.
Huh?
That's wrong.
And I gave my number, said I'm like, I want to know.
Ah, I used to fight.
I was the weekend. I don't care.
I fight every weekend.
You fight every weekend.
Heck, yeah. Because if he doesn't show up, he gets thrown out.
Yes.
And that happened where they have. Not all.
I don't have time to.
This guy.
Seven seconds.
Oh, it must be on. That's a lot of catching up.
A lot, a lot of information.
Is there a bad part of that, or is that?
That's it.
Okay. Okay.
Well, this is what we have to do.
Right, yeah.
See, mine does.
We need dogs.
Mine does say, "Join the meeting." Owen says, "My own town in South America has been lost." I need some backup.
I have a person from that, I don't remember now. That line just. There are times when you pull up, let your friends over, just wants to jump to. And they'll say, "Chang, somebody sent me something." Not personal, and then they think it's very messy, so it's.
Which is a question. When I called the meeting, it said, "Join the meeting." This was sent to me.
Oh, that's right.
I'm like, "Oh."
Yeah, always remember this. Make sure, always worry he doesn't take this there. There it is. And if you want me to talk a little more.
Yeah.
Turn that.
Now?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't worry about this, just do this later, never update. Never update.
The next one, informational, mental health, and suicidal management, all that stuff. Just able, you know.
Just sort of sensitive.
And you see, yeah, the information. So I asked him, just. This isn't this. Probably, yeah, the informational, join the board, be informational. I was going to look at. Want to just come to that, do that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September twentieth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the school board for the Dover area school district. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Banker, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton? Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. De Show?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahouser?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. First up, we have our presentations tonight, Mr. Stefanovic from Dover Township.
Good evening, everyone. I have a fair amount to go over, but I'll try to be as brief as possible. Uh, the first thing, uh, is an open house that we're having at our Dover Township, a wastewater treatment plant. Uh, that's coming up next Tuesday. Uh, it is an open house that they have every year. And if you can imagine what they have been struggling with in the past couple of months, uh, if you're interested, it is a very neat tour. It's from three till seven that night. Uh, they actually have guided tours of the facility for whatever you can take out of it. But it's, it's pretty neat how it all works. Uh, the facility, believe it or not, is completely, uh, gravity-fed from all of us. So whoever designed this system a long time ago did a really neat job. And, uh, if you can imagine, uh, they sent, they sent us emails trying to keep us up to date on the flow and what's happening over there. And they, uh, I just grabbed one page and it was a flow on a forty-two inch pipe. So this isn't just a little, you know, pipe. This was on September tenth, it was full. The pipe was completely full. And it was flowing at the size of a sixty-two inch pipe due to an additional pump that they knew we were going to need because of circumstances. And all of that kept the system from having an overflow, which none of us like. So, uh, so that, that, uh, open house is, is open to everybody. And if you want to, uh, go over and take advantage of it, we'd appreciate it. Uh, in, uh, June, I have a look, a few statistics here. Everybody's interested in the activity in our world, we, it is quite active these days. In June, there were fourteen, I call them major building permits. Uh, generally, they were for, for new homes in the area. Uh, sixty-two in total. In July, there were twelve, uh, major homes. Uh, fifty-one, uh, building permits in total. And, uh, we have heard about a, uh, forty-unit request for EDUs and new homes that could be coming at us at any time. Now, I don't know a whole lot about that one. Uh, but, uh, for the people that are doing the permits and trying to keep after everything that's happening, it's, it's been a very busy time. Uh, a few things, in the, in the sewer authority, uh, we have three projects that are going on, trying to get them done. One of them is, we call it the Palomino Interceptor. It's replacement of the pipes that run from, uh, Max Ice Cream, the, the, uh, Route seventy-four, where the, the pipes actually go underneath seventy-four. But the pipes from there, I guess that would be the other way. What is that, uh, sort of west, northwest, or whatever? And, uh, the pipes were, were, are way undersized and old, so we've been working on that for a while. Uh, actually, there isn't any work happening. We've been doing all the grunt work for this. We got caught in some, some, uh, special things we had to do to make sure there's no bog turtles there and, and some other requirements that, that came upon us that we were a little surprised about. But the contractor has gotten a little delayed with the weather and we're almost sort of glad he did because if he'd have been in there digging around and doing work. So it is a project, though, that we're, uh, looking to have done by the end of the year, uh, in the middle of the first quarter. So it's still, it's still pretty much on schedule. Our north of the borough, uh, project, which is going to get sewer available, sort of from Harmony Grove North, there is spotty sewer, uh, up there. And, uh, part of that includes a pumping station. So the, uh, the design for that has been completed, the land has been acquired to put the pumping station in. And, uh, there will be facilities available for, for growth, uh, north of the borough up to, hmm, BlackBerry, maybe. I don't know if we're going to quite go that far or not. But, uh, we'll be moving in that direction. So then the next major thing way out in the future is what happens when you go over the hill, so. And then for us, if you didn't know, the Dover facility services, uh, some of West Manchester, Manchester, and Conewaga Township, including all of Dover. Uh, so there's a thing called a joint interceptor. It is exactly what it says. It's an interceptor, pipes that come together, that serve, that, that, uh, they all come together at a certain point and, and feed the facility. Uh, that, again, is way undersized. So that's been something we've been working on. Our bids are going out for that, uh, with trying to get the bids back by November and, uh, move forward with that and get it completed next year. So those, those are the big projects that are, that are happening over in, in the, uh, side with the facilities. As far as roads go, uh, we have had our share of problems with bridges, uh, especially bridges in our, in our township. I don't think it's affected anybody too terrible much. But, uh, down behind Palomino, the, the bridges down there, you see the big orange barrels. And that's because the undercarriage of that bridge was damaged with some of the, the, uh, high waters that we've had in the past months. I think we have three like that that we have to, uh, jump on and try to get emergency repairs done. And right now, I think they're, they're doing an excellent job of keeping them running. And they've reduced some of the, the weight carrying on them, which, again, I don't think has bothered any of the, the bus traffic. It has mostly bothered the heavy truck world, so. Trying to think of a couple of other ones here. Of course, our building is, is visibly in process. You can see that it's, uh, the structure is up, the roof is on. Uh, we are working through many of the things. Our building, we're hoping to be, uh, in by the end of the year. Uh, it was early November, but with, uh, the weather, we've been delayed now about, about three to four weeks. So we're hoping to be in by the end of the year. Uh, just mentioned a little bit, and we were in the meeting, that, uh, we have hit a fair amount of rock. So rock is, uh, not our friend right now. And, uh, we're trying to get through that, that part of our project. Once we get past that, it'll make everybody feel better, so. So that's still pretty much on, on track by the, uh, middle, that's another one, by the middle of the first quarter. We're hoping to have full usage of the facilities that we're putting up over there.
Right.
Uh, I understand, uh, that we have cooperated together on a cross-country, uh, and a cross-country agreement. So, uh, I know that is going to be discussed and, uh, look for the approval of whatever, uh, agreement has come to play there. And I appreciate the, the work between the, the people in the two areas to get that done. Yeah, that was great. Uh, one thing that has happened to us, and this is just a little, little sidelight, I don't know if it ever happens, uh, or not. We had somebody come about Sky Lanterns. You know what they are? It's the bag with the thing. And, uh, they have been happening in our area here and there. Uh, we have been asked to, to ban them, uh, because of the safety issue. They have come down on some people's roofs. So if there is any, uh, extracurricular things, uh, we are possibly, now, this is more or less me talking, but we discussed it at our last board meeting. And I think there's a general consensus there, they are not the best thing in the world for us. They are pretty when they go off and they usually have a good reason behind it that they're, they're doing it. But maybe there's a different way. So, uh, I know personally, one that was done, I think at the park back here about two years ago, they landed on the roof of our property. So our property has a metal roof, so it didn't bother anything. But I assume somebody with a shingled roof or whatever could get a little excited. So that, that's another one that's happening. Uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, is moving forward. Uh, the first planning session meeting is on Monday. So if anybody is involved with that, uh, this planning session is mostly to, to coordinate, uh, when the meetings are going to be and who's going to be involved and, and what assistance they might need. So I know, uh, Charlie has volunteered to be part of that and he'll probably be contacted if he hasn't already. And if you do want to get involved, uh, with the comprehensive plan, you are more than welcome to. You could see, uh, Laurel Oswalt, the Township manager, if you're interested. She's pretty much, uh, spearheading that. Uh, today, we had a, uh, a breakfast meeting. The, uh, ICDC is a committee that's, uh, created by the township. It's industrial, commercial development. We're trying to get, uh, more into the area in a, in a fashion that is good for everyone and not just bring business in for the sake of it. But, uh, business helps everyone with taxes, both to keep our taxes down and to bring more taxes in for, for us to do our jobs. So it was a pretty good meeting. I appreciate the time and the people that came, uh, today. Uh, there will be other meetings, I'm sure, in the future. And it's a tough thing because it's, uh, sort of just out there. The ICDC is not allowed to be the committee, I, I don't think technically. But they are spearheading, uh, the effort to try to, try to get a business, uh, group started here in Dover. So that's, that's happening. If you do have a business or know of someone that does, that's, that's another one that's, uh, we're looking for people's ideas on how to grow and where to maybe put business in our area. Because we are more rural than anything, so. And I think the, the last thing that I thought of, anyway, our Dover Township signs on either side of seventy-four are virtually nonexistent. We have tried a few times to get volunteers to help, uh, make the signs. If you know of anyone that would like to participate or would like to take this. And possibly, you know, there is some funds available to, to do this, for sure.
We have students who might be interested in taking on that project.
We would be more than happy. We want to get these signs back up again and have them be visible. And, and, uh, the one, I think, is gone, or virtually gone, and the other one is almost unreadable. So, uh, that was one thing I wanted to mention. So if you know of, uh, anybody that would like to help with that, we appreciate it. Uh, we did dedicate a couple of roads, uh, this past month, uh, in a development. Let's see if I can find all the, here, Kirsten Drive, Kendall Lane, Jody Lane, and Jessica Drive. Uh, what that means, that's in Ashley Farms Three, the third part of that, is now those roads will be maintained and, and staffed more or less by the township. So the plowing will get done, the buses can officially.
Some of our bus routes.
Right.
They did. When they were dedicated, they allowed us to change, cut, change a couple of families this summer, which was great.
Good, yes, right. So those, those are happening. Uh, the tough part about dedicating a road is we want the road to be, uh, fully, uh, complete. And that means the drainage and everything else. We don't really want to take a road that we have to put, you know, multi-hundred thousands of dollars in to get it in, in, uh, usable shape. So there sometimes is a little delay there, but I know once it happens, it's beneficial to everyone. Right? So, uh, if there's any other questions for me, I can try to answer, or?
I have two.
Yes.
Is this just a rumor I heard that there's supposed to be a sheets going in at, at BlackBerry and seventy-four at the ball field? Is that true, or don't you know?
Uh, absolutely, I know for sure what happened. Uh, the fact that it's a sheets is a rumor. That was strictly a rumor. Uh, there was a request by a, a local landowner to have a portion of the corner at BlackBerry and seventy-four rezoned from, uh, conservation to, uh, BP. It's a commercial style, uh, of land. I gotta admit, personally, I was in favor of it. Uh, I, it did not happen. I'm not saying it's not going to move in that direction. But the, the, uh, the point is, until the land gets rezoned, it can't be anything, let alone a sheets. And I'm not saying it's a sheets. I mean, it could have been a medical center, it could have been, you know, it could have been storage facilities, it could have been anything. But, uh, yes, for some, somehow, a, a rumor got started, it was going to be a sheets, and there was a slight uproar about that, but, anyway.
Okay. The other thing I have is, we were in such a hurry to tear down those buildings at the corner of Hilton Avenue and seventy-four to put up a Burger King, and now it just sits vacant.
It's sitting there, it's in planning, the developers are getting their, uh, people together that are going to, uh, be part of that shopping mall right there.
So why were we in such a hurry to tear the buildings down now, for waiting and waiting and waiting?
We weren't in a hurry to tear them down. The people that own the property did that. And I gotta admit, once they own the property and it is zoned accordingly, I mean, if they want to tear the buildings down, that's their call. And how long it takes them to get moving is something that we push, but we can't make them do that. That's a little bit the same as Lidl, we are pushing that. And admit, there it sits. But they bought the property, they pay their taxes, and, and that's part of what ICDC is going to help us do.
I only brought it up because I, people come to me constantly saying, "Where's the Burger King that's coming on?" I have no idea. Now I can go back and tell them why.
Right. It's hopefully going to be part of that, that mall or, or strip area that's, uh, going to be, uh, built there, in that corner.
And does Dunkin' Donuts have another partner with them, or are they just going to be alone?
They are supposed to have a second partner. We do not know who that is yet. And, and that's another one, they may not, they, I mean, they have no requirement to tell us who it's going to be. Hopefully, they will. But, uh, their plans and everything for that building and everything have been approved already. As you can see, it's well underway, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sure.
So the, the Lidl store is still in, it, it, nothing has changed with that as far as the expectation. They're still planning to come? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. The only, last thing I heard was, uh, they may repurpose more of the, the building that is there as opposed to completely tearing it down and rebuilding a new building. So our, our, uh, push is, okay, let's do something. This is an excellent time. Oh, go ahead.
Two, two other questions, uh, real quick.
Yes.
The development that's behind the Members First there and behind Max, and you, you mentioned about some piping that you're working with in that general area. But, um, there's a lot, a large, open area there that I think is designed or intended to be developed. And now that they've opened that road up there, uh, past Palomino, past the, the bank there, I was just wondering, are you aware of houses moving in there? Like, is there any kind of increased development intended to take place there now?
I'm not aware of any of these permits being for that area, but I can find that out and let you know next time.
I was just curious, uh, there's a lot of lots in there that looks like at one point, they were ready to move forward, so.
Right. I mean, out of the, uh, whatever it is, twenty-six, uh, building permits we issued in the past two months, it's possible some of them are in there.
The other question I had is really more of a, a curiosity question. But the, uh, the wastewater treatment facility is down on Graffius Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's, that's where that's at. Is that actually in the township?
No, sir, it's not.
I didn't think so.
It's in Conewaga Township, actually.
Okay.
I have no idea how that happened.
Yeah, I was wondering.
A long, long time ago, but, uh.
Yeah. Low point.
Right. So we actually have to apply to Conewaga Township every time we want to, uh, do something at the plant.
Okay.
It's there, I mean, we're under their jurisdiction, actually, but, uh, that's.
I've often wondered just how that, how that flies.
Yep.
Or rolls or runs or whatever.
Or wherever, right, right, right. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Stefanovic, you had raised the cross-country issue, and I was just wondering if you and Mrs. Krim could maybe elaborate on that a little bit more for the public at this point?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, as we know, um, you know, we had an incident with a student who was hit by a car two weeks ago, I think it's been now. Um, and so in working with, uh, Mr. Wassler and Rich Lethery, we came up with a number of solutions and it's really worked out very well. So the first solution we did is we started busing the kids to Pinchot Park. And that, that worked okay. Uh, our concern with that one, though, is they're very far away from the district and they don't have their athletic trainer with them. And should something happen, you know, they will don't have their athletic trainer. But that, that was okay with fans. The second option, we went right to the township, um, and talked to them about the possibility of using the golf course, the old golf course behind their land. And they were great about that. And so working with them, we've gotten an agreement together, who's going to take care of it. Um, uh, it has to, the kids have to be supervised, which was something we had talked about being an issue. We completely understand that. And so after their vote, hopefully next week, that that will be another option for us. And, and these are all for practice only. We do not, it would not be for any of their meets. And then the third option that we're also doing is with the plan, uh, the coach has submitted to Mr. Wassler and myself, uh, a couple of routes that, that we are allowing them to run on with supervision, minimal street running, mostly on the sidewalks, with supervision as they cross any major roads. So between those three plans, we're hoping that gets them through the season. They, apparently, they need certain lengths and they need different types of terrain. And between those three plans, we think we've got it covered and we think we're good. So, but, but we really do appreciate it because, especially for our junior high cross-country, they can go right there. Um, and they can go right over that bridge. Um, we can bring our mowers over there, we can take care of it. Uh, so that actually is going to work out really well. And, and the township was great and, and responded really quickly when we needed that. So we do appreciate that.
Yep.
I thought you probably knew more about it than I did.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, you said about the committee on one, are they setting up the dates or is it committee meeting?
The, the planning committee meeting is on Monday evening. This Monday.
Okay.
No, that can't be, because Monday is our, it's, it must be during the day. I, Laurel informed me that the, the meeting to do the planning, to get everything organized for, for the, uh, comprehensive plan schedule is to be on Monday.
Oh, okay.
Now I can find out what the date is, or what the timing of it is and where it's going to be.
Okay, I can check with her. I mean, I know, uh, somebody told me about going to a rain meeting on Monday night. You probably heard about the rain tax York County's trying to put in.
Uh, yes, yes. Yep. That's a, yeah, a rain tax, whatever you want to call it, it's a runoff, right? That, uh, there are a lot of funds needed for, for, uh, that job. And, uh, we're learning about it all the time. Right now, uh, there are township funds from the township, uh, that are being spent to, uh, fund that program, the MS Four program for the county. And the county is thinking about, uh, making a tax that would be levied across the board in the county. As opposed to right now, town, a township does not have to participate in it from the funding standpoint. But then they get no benefits. But the biggest problem is, especially for our township, is none of the water runoff, too much starts in our township, it all comes in. And the townships that are feeding our waterways are not participating. So we're saddled with funding and taking care of the whole issue of what's coming in. And, and, uh, we agree a little bit with the fact that it should be a county-wide effort. Now, how should it be taxed is the next issue that might take a while to iron out. So I haven't heard about it called that yet, but that's.
Well, that's what I was told, they're having a meeting down Rinder on Monday evening.
Monday evening? Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, we have our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, uh, we did not have an executive session, so we will move right past the board president communication and go right into our first committee report, and that is the Capital Project Steering Committee. Um, we met as a committee tonight, and Mr. Nelson told us that the first floor of the building will be done by the end of November. If we get more rain, it's, it's December then, right? So, no, um, Dave did tell us that things are going very well at this point, but obviously, the rain has, uh, not cooperated with us and has caused a few issues. Um, fall goes well, uh, over the weekend, and we don't get a lot of rain this weekend. They will start digging the first footers on Monday, uh, on the end toward Canal Road. Am I correct on that, then, Dave? So, um, a lot of the water retention, uh, drainage work is done. Uh, some of the retaining walls are in. Uh, the goal is to have the athletic field, uh, completed by February so that it's available for the spring season, uh, up there. And at this point, you have, Dave, over five hundred clearances on hand for people working on the site. So a lot of people are going to be going in and out of there, uh, to do their work. Um, I know Dave has a big presentation for us and Scott's with us, uh, from Crabtree tonight, uh, to go over some photos, lots of photos of dirt and rock, I think, are coming our way. Um, so unless you have anything to add, Mr. De Show, we'll turn it over to Dave and Scott, and they can do their thing.
Like you said, it's a lot of pictures of dirt and rock, because that's all we're dealing with right now, but, uh, and some pipe work. But, uh, uh, this is pretty much the start of the project. Uh, we were just mobilizing at this point. Uh, this is on what used to be the tennis courts and basketball courts at the school. You can see they're actually unloading a container there. Taking down the fencing on the baseball, softball fields, uh, trimming a lot of the trees. We took that tree line back about fifteen to twenty feet in some spots. Uh, this is where we're getting rid of a lot of the dirt. And you see, it's a little bit muddy here, not too bad at this point. Uh, dugouts are gone, but the press box and the concession stand's still there. So, um, this is about two, two weeks after we started, and there's half the tennis courts are gone. And all, all the fencing. And all, all the fencing around tennis courts is gone. This is from standing on the roof looking towards Canal Road, so you can see, you know, a lot of dirt being moved. This is an outfall pipe from one of the retention ponds in the front that goes into the creek. This is what it looks like when they first started. That's what it looks like now that it's all finished up. So we have that rock waterfall-type effect there, helps slow the water down, helps stop erosion. This is just another shot from down at the park of the retention pond that we're doing. They're actually putting that pipe in that went down to that outfall that I just showed you. So, this is the pipe that goes down there. We had to put these concrete barriers in about every eight feet. There's probably about fifteen of them, I think, down through there. It goes down to the water. Just in case it would start to wash, these are supposed to stop it from washing. So on the edge of that retainer wall, we had to, once we got the wall built, we had to dig it out. You can see it's about almost three and a half to four foot wide, all the way to the bottom, and we ended up filling it up with clay. And what the clay does for you is gives you a barrier that the water can't go through, so it can't, can't wash out that wall if it does fill up with water, and it can't seep through the wall. The little green thing that you see sitting there on the ground right here, he is measuring density of the ground to make sure it's solid. So every time we do anything that has to have any compaction, we, we take a density test on. This guy's there all day long doing that every single day. That's all he does. Sets in his truck a lot, too, but that's all he does. So, I mean, there's only so many times you can check it. Uh, this is just building up the sidewalls. They're, you know, rolling it here. And this is some of the mud we're dealing with here. So this tractor, I'll explain this a little bit to you here. These things that you see up on either side of this tractor are GPS. And they work off coordinates and tell, tell, they tell the tractor where to set the blade, so they get it level. So it's not like a guy's guessing at it to get it level. This thing's working off GPS to get it level. So there's, I think there's four tractors over there that look like that. This is just another shot going into that retention pond to show you the, the angle of that bank. If you remember, it used to be a driveway right here, so that's gone. That's why we had to take it off, so. This is the building pad. We have the building pad probably about sixty percent complete at this point. We actually raised that area up. It used to be the softball field, soccer field, about four to five feet. This is standing down looking up, so you can see just how high up we went with this. I'm standing on the old ground, and you can see it's about five foot higher there. So we'll be, we'll be a lot higher up in the air than what we were. Shouldn't have to ever worry about flooding or anything like that. This is another shot from down that hole. This is kinda what we're dealing with, with rock. That smoky stuff you see there is actually from scratching the rock. So they'll, they dig into it. They dig into it with this hook, and they try and get it, get it free. They don't always get it free. Sometimes they have to put a jackhammer on the end there instead of the hook and use that. But this is the kinda stuff we're dealing with, with the rock. It's a lot of rock on the site, and we, we kinda anticipated that when we started, that we knew it was gonna be a lot of rock like that, which is, I think, if you remember when we did the, did the contract, we took a, a line item in there called unclassified excavation, and this, this is why we did it, so we didn't get charged for it. So this is just kinda what we're dealing with, rock. You can see it's, it's a lot there. Another pile of rock there sitting, so, big rocks, not just little rocks. So this is about, probably about three or four weeks later. You can see the site's starting to actually level out from where you see the school up there to the left, down to the building pad, so we're leveling out. That used to be a pretty good hill right there. Just another shot of the building pad. It's real nice and flat. You get out there and walk around. It's pretty solid. Although I walked out on it last Thursday, I think it was. I'm glad I had my boots on, because by the time I got off, I was in six inches of mud. So it does get wet. This is looking the opposite way from what picture I just showed you. About half the press box is gone here, and the concession stand's now missing, so we're, we're moving ahead and making headway here. Our big holdup with the concession stand was we had to wait till Med Ed removed the electric to the concession stand. That was like an act of Congress to get that done. We had to, they, they had to tell us how much it cost. We had to write them a check. They had to wait till they got the check, and the check cleared the bank before they would even schedule it. So it was a long, drawn-out process. So it's not, it's not simple like, hey, can you unhook this for me today? Doesn't work that way. So this is the same shot from the roof where I showed you the lay-down area. Notice a lot of stuff that's there is not there anymore. We're kinda moving it around now. It's actually closer to the building. We have all the job trailers closer to the building. And this is just another shot up. We actually took, ran a pipe. I was talking about this tonight. You see the backhoe up here? We ran a pipe from right up here where this house is, all the way down. It goes all the way to the creek. And that takes, from Newland Road, it takes all the water off Newland Road and puts it down in the creek. So it's, it's a twenty-four or thirty-inch pipe. I don't remember how big it was. It's a pretty good-sized pipe, but it runs the whole way down. There's like four manholes on the way down as you go down through there. Believe it or not, one day, a couple of days, we had dust. So it's kinda comical, because we were spraying the road down, and the following day, we got a complaint about dust. We didn't get a complaint that we sprayed the road down. It was just coincidental. Really, it was. So, but it was that dry. You mean, it was, it was, it was really dusty there for about two weeks. We did have some, uh, some hairy situations. They actually worked underneath these high-voltage lines for about two days with that backhoe. At times, they were probably within four or five feet of those lines at any one time, so it was a little scary. This is right up on, kinda where Intermediate Avenue stops, if you would drive up that grassy area, so. This is one of the retention ponds. We had to put in this special pipe here in the, in the basin. Something that county conservation required. A long story, but I don't think it's gonna help, but anyway. This is right after a pretty good rainstorm. The, the lower retention pond's actually holding about six inches of water. It drains out pretty nice, so it doesn't stay there very long, so.
Question on that. How do you impact, or how do you think that that retention pond will impact the, the water runoff into the creek?
It'll make it better.
Flooded so many times. Do you think it'll be better?
It'll make it better.
It will be better, even after the project is finished, you think?
It'll get a lot better after the project's finished. I mean, right now, all the water that comes off the roof and off the parking lots goes right into the creek. That's where it's going now. Once we get done, it's all going in this retention pond, and it'll slowly allow it to go out over a period of days or weeks, so it'll, it'll, this should definitely improve it. So definitely.
Just curious, thanks.
Uh, and there's actually, if you, if you go over there and look, there's two, there's two retention ponds. There's one here, and then there's another one to the right of it, as you're facing Canal Road, which you see here, which is holding water back here. And this will be right alongside of the school, so this one tends to hold a little more water than the other one, but eventually, this one will cascade into the lower one. This one's a little higher. Right now, it doesn't, but it will eventually. Neither, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do you have to put a fence around that?
Yes.
Because I'm thinking of pools.
Yes, we will put, we will put a fence around. Yeah, it's scheduled.
But, but it drains. I mean, it goes down and drains, but then when it fills back, okay.
We, we'll have a fence around it that, you know, kids can't get in there.
And that one's actually an infiltration basin, which is different than the retention. An infiltration basin, over time, you're supposed to recharge the water table, so over time, that's supposed to absorb back into the site itself, and then it will, if it ever fills up too high, like Dave said, it'll overflow into the.
Would you say it was called?
Infiltration.
Infiltration basin. I, I call them retention.
Well, yeah. Larger ones are retention, and the smaller ones, the infiltration.
So.
There's not really two retention. One's a retention and one's.
One's infiltration. I always call them the same thing, but they're actually two different ones. But yeah, they will have a fence around, and I, I'm, I'm guaranteeing, somebody's gonna get a phone call complaining long about December that, what did you do to our sledding hill? No one thought of that yet, did they? I did. So. Like I said, we went from.
Ground somewhere.
Yeah. We went from dry to this. So that mud's about two feet deep right there, and it's real soft. You, you step in that, you're, you know, you're up to your knees. So it's definitely, it's definitely muddy. So I put my big high boots on, and I go out in that. So down near where we had to move that pipe that we talked about, we had a change order a couple of weeks ago. This is a retention wall down in that corner. We had to, to level out for the multi-purpose field, so we had to build a wall to hold the, hold it back, and it's not quite done yet, but they're working on it here. So this is what it kinda looks like from the, the lower side, if you will. I think it goes up about another one or two blocks. It's not a whole, it's not a lot higher than that, though. Uh, and then there's another one down further. This was last Thursday. It's actually done now. But this was last Thursday. It's down a little bit further towards Canal Road than what the one in the back is. This was a, right next to the infiltration basin, there's an underground storage.
It's infiltration as well.
Okay, so, but I call it underground storage, but basically. See, I don't get the terms right. I know what it does, I just don't get the terms right. So basically, what you have here is you have this big pit, and you line it with this fabric, and, and you put pipes in there, like one right after the other, side by side. And then you cover it all with stones, and then you put your dirt and stuff on top, so all your water goes in these catch basins and goes in those pipes, and then slowly goes into the infiltration basin and slowly lets it out. We have one out here in this parking lot that nobody knows is out there that is, the pipes are probably three foot, three to four foot tall, and they're side by side, you know. The whole parking lot's covered with them, and that's an infiltration ba, or a retention system out there. So this was the change order that we had a couple of weeks ago to move this pipe over. So because of timing, this is why we really had to have the, had to have the change order. We couldn't shut the system down long enough to cut the pipe out, put the pipe back in, get all the tests run on the water system, and then get it back in service and not disrupt school for a week. So, uh, we had to put these, these, there it is. We gotta put these, they're actually a T. Now, this one isn't in, in the right position yet, but I just kinda took a shot. It's in two pieces. It's split. You put, you put it on, you bolt it, and there's an O-ring here, and there's an O-ring over here. It's split, and then you pull these flanges in against, and it kinda squishes the O-ring, and, and it makes a seal. And then you put this valve on that, on this section here, you put this valve on. And up to that point, you still got the pipe underneath it. So then you put this machine on here. You see us, you see two different shots over here. And it's air-driven, and it, you open the valve up, and it drills a hole in the side of that pipe while it's pressurized. So there's about a hundred and fifty pounds of pressure in that pipe, and this thing drills a hole while it's sitting there. And we drilled, we did this on both ends. We drilled these two holes in there. And once you get it done, you back it out, you close the valve, and you're done. So then we, not a real good picture, but, oops, back up here. There we go. So up here in the top, you can see where there's the valve. We put a little section on here. We put two forty-fives on. We're gonna come down this, this trench here, and then we're gonna hook it up at the other end. Once we got that all done, we, we had to cut the old pipe, and we put these caps on, so that pipe's isolated now, so that, you know, nothing can ever, you know, happen to it, or collapse, if it collapses, it's not gonna really matter. It's not gonna fill up with water and stuff. And that was kind of our, that was kind of our pipe move, removing. We did that all on a Saturday. We came in one Saturday and did that, so. Worked out real well. The only thing we could never figure out is when we were digging, is we hit this pack of, patch of stones right here. None of us could figure out why that pile of stones was six feet below ground. Never could figure it out, but it was down there. So a couple of weeks ago, I know there's some discussion. It was right before school started. I found a sinkhole over at the high school right along the driveway that's behind the gym. And this is what I found. This is what it looked like when I found it, and I was like, okay, something's definitely wrong here. So, next day, I got company to come in, and we started digging, and we dug it up, and we ended up having to go from, there's three manholes here. There's one back here. There's one here, and this one up front here. And I actually had the sinkhole between these two. Wasn't really in the driveway, but scared me, 'cause I didn't know what was going on in the driveway. Well, as soon as we started digging, we dropped the backhoe through right here. It actually fell right through this blacktop. So first couple of cars would've came, they would've dropped through the blacktop on first day of school or band camp. This was, this was the, if I remember right, the Thursday or Friday before band camp. So it was, to me, it was important to get it done. We had to get it done. So we got it all, we got it all fixed up. This is what the pipe looked like that was buried in the ground. So that, where you see there's nothing, that was on the bottom. And, you know, because water kinda lays in there, and it's just a galvanized steel pipe, it ended up rusting the pipe out, and roared the dirt away, and that's what caused the sinkhole. That's what happens to a lot of them. He's looking at them, yep, I've seen that before. So we got it all, all dug open and put back in in less than two days, so I thought we, they did a, did a real good job for us, so. And that's it.
And then, um, one thing I wanted to touch on, I won't take too much more time, was just to kinda talk about the, um, just the change order process in general, to know what to expect as we move through construction. Um, I, I wasn't here for the first review of that first change order, but, um, as you know, when we accepted bids and looked at the alternates, we looked at how much money we had left over for our construction contingency, and that equates to about one point one eight million dollars. So we have a pool of, of a little over a million dollars that's included in our overall sixty-five million dollar budget that you approved a while back that is, that is sitting there to handle construction contingency issues, and that would be any change orders that come about. So some of those change orders that could come about would be for unforeseen conditions. Actually, there's one that will, will be coming up, probably next month or two, where there is a, um, a, a roof drain that wasn't on any existing drawings, where it's in the footprint of where we're trying to build our school, and we can't just leave the roof drain off, 'cause then all the water off the roof will go onto the, on the, on the, onto the, uh, new school. But the, so that's an unforeseen conditions, where we had no control over, over what was going on. There are others that might be for regulatory agency, uh, issues that come up. Another one that's gonna be coming up is, as you know, we, once we awarded, or once we received our bids, we were, had to deal with the County Conservation District on multiple items, getting their approval. Well, some of the things that they wanted to change or add, of course, weren't in the contractor's original bid, so we're gonna see a change order coming through for those. We're in the process of reviewing all that with the contractor now. But that's another, uh, item that can come through. Another one might be just an owner request. There might be a change in the way you want something to look, or the way you want, um, things to function. Could be just a, a request to change something in the design. And then there's what we call errors and omissions. So I always talk to, talk to school districts about standard of care. So standard of care in our profession, as architects and engineers, isn't perfection. So we strive, of course, we strive to do our best and get everything, everything together and get everything exactly as it should be, but, you know, it's a fifty million dollars in, uh, construction costs, and there might be some things here or there that we, that we miss, or, or that, that are, that are omitted. Now, the way we always look at that is, um, things might, uh, should always be a value add. In other words, if there's something that, um, that we admitted for the con, from the, uh, from the documents that needs to be added, if that was in the original construction documents, that would've been in the contractor's original price. It's not like, um, you know, you would've gotten some for free. So that's, so that's, um, that's another change order that can come through. And, um, back to that issue of standard ca, standard care in the industry as a whole, the standard for change orders on a contract is anywhere from five to eight percent of the construct, value of the construction. Our budget is two percent. We haven't had a, a project go over two percent in change orders, and I, I can't, I can't think back, back how long unless it was some, like, huge rock issue that, that we had to deal with. And then also with the standard, the, uh, the typical standard of care for architects in this region for errors and omissions and, uh, change orders is actually two to three percent. We haven't had a project go over a percent of that in, in also, I don't know how long. So, so we're already on top of the game, but I just wanted to, ahead of the game, but I just wanted to kinda brief everybody and talk about the whole process. And then, so when a change order does come through, if, if the contractor identifies additional costs, or we identify a change in scope that needs additional cost, it does, it doesn't come right to the board for approval or right to the administration for approval. It'll come to us. We'll, we'll review the costs. If it's even, see if it's even valid. We might reject it upfront without even coming to Dave or coming to any administration to review it. But if it is valid, then we'll go through the costs. We'll review it, make sure it's within the industry standards, make sure all the quantities are validated and things like that, so, um, so there's that whole process. We might have them review the costs, and there might be a lot of back and forth before you actually see it here. So there's a lot of legwork that happens behind the scenes for that. But like I said, um, we have one point one, or one point one eight million dollars sitting there to handle any of these construction issues that occur. You saw the first one for fourteen thousand, uh, uh, last month, but there's gonna be more along the way and just, you know. I know no one likes the word change order, but, you know, it's, it's just a part of, uh, part of construction, and, um, we're gonna do our best to make sure that doesn't, that money doesn't get spent. That's money that basically just, that'll basically not be used as part of the budget, and, and be, can be used for something else in the end, so. Any questions, yes?
Yeah, um, can you explain what the difference is between the change orders and the unforeseen things that you have to deal with, and then that. and then that line item that we approved as a, as an add-on to take care of some of the things that we don't know what we're gonna get into? I, I'm not clear on what.
You're talking about the classified versus unclassified alternate, or are you?
Uh, whatever the.
With the rock?
With the rock, and things like that. So that, to me, would be an unforeseen, so what's different about where that money?
So, the, what, so with excavation, the, what you don't know is, uh, how much rock or unsuitable soils, you might even have soil that's too soft that you can't build on top of, that has to be taken out, and, and properly compacted soil put back in its place. Um, that would be, that would just deal with strictly with excavation and existing, uh, conditions of the earth itself. So, you took, you took from each contractor, an alternate for them to basically own everything that, that they would hit with regards to the earthwork. So that would cover the rock, the unsuitables, and things like that. So, um, let's say you were to dig down, there, there used to be an old farm on the, on the, where the softball field was, let's say they were digging down, it hit an old septic tank. It would not cover that. So that would be something that was, uh, an unforeseen condition that was, uh, that was more man-made versus than, than the, uh, than the excavation that deals with rock and things like that. So really, those alternates you took deal strictly with, uh, excavation. And let's go to like a renovation project scenario. Uh, unforeseen conditions really apply more, more so to that. Let's say you opened up a wall, and you didn't know there's a pipe there, you, and you're, and you're, you wanted to take out that wall and make it an open space. Well, if there's a pipe running through there, you gotta reroute that pipe. That might be an unforeseen condition that, uh, that wouldn't be handled via a change order. But as far as.
The alternate was.
The alternate dealt strictly with excavation. And, and rock and unsuitable, and unsatisfactory soils. So, all the rock that they've been hitting are basically, um, you'll never see a change order for that because they're, because you took that alternate. On some other projects, uh, if you, if you, if you go with a classified construction, you would be paying for that via unit price.
But the, the one thing that we talked, when we talked about this before we got here tonight, if you have a change order, and it, and they have to dig, and they hit rock, that's not covered under unclassified construction, because it's not, it wasn't, it wasn't part of their scope of work.
Yeah, let's say, and what Dave means by that, let's say there's a change in the, in the construction to say that you need to dig more, or add another pipe that wasn't originally in the documents, that wouldn't be covered if you hit rock in that scenario, because that wasn't part of that original, um, bid package.
Um, I have a question too. So when you said about that drain pipe, you didn't know, it wasn't on the blueprints?
Correct, we have, well, limited selection of drawings from the original natatorium construction, and there was nothing to show, and, and also, we also did surveys in one, PA one calls, and, and nothing came across showing that roof drain underground connecting into, um, it goes underground, so what happened when the contractor was excavating, they came across that pipe and determined it was a roof drain.
Okay, and then the conservation, I know that gets to be a real issue. Um, so, they don't, they don't inform you, you don't go to them ahead of time and say, how does that work?
We do, so, uh, on this project, um, we went through the, the goal is always to get all, everything, all that ironed out before you go to bid. On this project, it didn't, the stars didn't align that way. And, we basically had the initial review at the time of, um, at the time we went out to bid. And then I think, did we, did we capture any of those reviews in the addendum? I think, I think one of, so, um, we basically had to pull teeth and make phone calls and do everything we could to get them, get them moving along, to get, to do their review. We had submitted back in April, or, April, in April. And they just were so backed up, they, one of the gals quit, they didn't hire someone in her place. So, the stars didn't align to have all those reviews done, and the back and forth done in time for receipt of bids. Um, I think we had one of their reviews that we did get, and that we incorporated in our addendums while we're out to bid, so those prices, the prices of, of what they requested for that first review were in the contractor's bids, but after we received bids, they had additional revisions and additional revisions. Um, and one of them was actually that pipe that Dave showed, that he said he didn't agree with, we, our engineers didn't agree with adding it, and there's manuals that say you can do it the way they wanted to do it, but, you know, the Conservation District insisted.
So that's unforeseen then?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that's, yeah, that would be a regulatory agency coming in.
Oh, after the fact.
Yeah, we, we went to County Conservation for our first round, they came back with comments. We addressed those comments, they came back with more comments the second time, that weren't on the first round. So we re, readdressed that, they came back a third time with comments that weren't on either one of the first two. Every time we went back, they came up with something else to add, you know, it was, and by that time, we were out to bid, and, you know, so now we're dealing with, we're, we're working through it.
Yeah, I think the second and third round were after we received bids.
But they wouldn't come back with more now?
No.
No, they've given us the approval.
Well, the only, the only thing they could do.
They could inspect the site and say, well, I want this instead of, that's, that's just the nature of regulatory agencies, and.
I know on this, when we did Dover Elementary Site, they came back after, we were under construction for probably three, four months, and they came back and said, we want a silt fence here, and we want it higher. And we'd already been under construction, and that was way after we got started, but, you know, that's just.
Do regulatory agencies periodically inspect as construction is going on?
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I was just curious how that.
So it'll be on the, the County Conservation District. Uh, of course, the township has their, their staff from a public works standpoint that also oversee, oversee and inspect some things, and, and they're, they have their township engineer. Uh, but then on the building, the township has a third-party inspection agency that'll do, uh, inspect the building portion of it. And then you, as a district, also have a third-party agency that does testing, that, that, what Dave showed you with that, when he's testing the density, that's actually, um, uh, a company that's, that was hired directly by the district to basically watch out for your best interest, and make sure the contractor's building it correctly.
How about things like the, the traffic study that was going on very early in the process? And do we know how that shook out, or any, any input on that?
No, we haven't, um, we're actually talking with the ELA currently about working into the timeline of when we, if, if, if nothing happens with that development, we know what we need to do, and what, and with those review agencies with, with, um, with PEDDOT, and the township, and things like that, where do we need to back into our schedule to basically say, all right, if the developer's not here, we gotta start our schedule of what we need to do? And that's actually gonna be, believe it or not, um, the end of the fall here, beginning of the winter, when we'll need to kind of at least start our portion of the design of, of those improvements, and get in with PEDDOT.
Anybody else? Mr. Nelson, will those pictures be put on our webpage, so the public can see some of the progress there? Thank you. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we'll move on to our, uh, facilities and safe and supportive schools report at this time. That would be Mr. Emig and Mr. Rahauer.
We had a couple items tonight that we discussed. First of all was policy seven oh seven, use of school facilities and fees. It was recommended to us to increase the fees by ten to twelve percent. Uh, currently, we have more discussion, 'cause we wanna get actual, actual charges for custodians and so forth, plus we also want to go out, I have other school districts that I wanna look at to see what they charge, so we are competitive with the other school districts as far as that. Uh, the next policy was eight nineteen, and I'm gonna let Mrs. Johnson, uh, go over this. She was in our meeting, and, and she can discuss this. Mrs. Johnson, if you would.
Okay, so we do currently have, uh, this policy, but the current policy actually only addresses the assessment of suicidal risk and what the interventions should be, should a student be determined to be at risk. Um, it also addresses sort of what would occur if a suicide were to occur, and kind of what our post-vention procedure should be. Act seventy-one actually articulates that our policy should be much more comprehensive than that, um, that a policy should address how we're doing awareness. Shall I continue? Um, the policy should address specifically how we're doing education and awareness, um, and that's, that is supposed to be for students, staff, and parents. It also indicates that our policy should address prevention, intervention, and post-vention. And so our current policy just does not cover all of those areas. Um, we obtained a sample policy from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and that's what we reviewed at the committee today. It is very comprehensive, um, and it basically outlines each of those areas. We do currently have procedures in place that we've worked on over this past year that meet all of the standards of this policy. Um, it was my recommendation that we adopt this policy as it stands. Really, the only alter, the only alteration that we would need to make is a list of local resources for students and families to access, because the last page kind of identifies some resources for families. Um, so with that alteration, I think that we could move forward with adopting this policy as it's proposed from the PSBA.
And along with that, um, she had informed us that we've had, uh, quite a number of students that are dealing with suicide issues at this point, and they're handling it, so she's been busy with the suicide issues at this point, so. And I guess that relates to, I guess, the northeastern student that committed suicide. Um, so, that is a big concern of ours, is the suicide.
Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you. And then, of course, the other thing that we discussed was, uh, about safe and supportive schools. Uh, the high school had a drill the other day, and the administrators were not pleased with that, so they're gonna hold another drill tomorrow. And currently, as of right now, we've had no safety issues at any of our buildings in the district. Mr. Rahauer, anything else you'd like to add?
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Emig. Uh, we will move on now to the Comprehensive Planning and Curriculum and Professional Development Committee, that would be Mr. Delauter, Mrs. Herman, and Mrs. Maile.
Okay, um, first item that we discussed in our meeting was the, the draft, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar, and I'm going to defer to Mrs. Kroom, and she can talk more about it.
Okay, so next year's tentative calendar, proposed calendar, and the calendar the year after have to work hand in hand to give us the most time, uh, next summer, the summer we open the new high school. So we have kids and, uh, teachers out of the building, and we, we have found fifteen weeks. Because if you remember, we have to finish the new high school, knock down the intermediate school at that time, do renovations on the high school, turn it into a middle school, and build the parking lots for the new high school. So, to get that amount of time, uh, what we did is you'll take, the, the major changes are the fact that the teachers will come in and start on Monday, August twelfth. This is a couple days earlier than we did start this year, and they will get five, uh, professional development days up that, that entire week. Then on the nineteenth, that following Monday, kindergarten, seventh grade, ninth, and we are going to bring seniors in on the nineteenth to get an extra day for them, so we can have graduation when we want it to have it at the end of the year. And then the rest of the kids will come in on the twentieth. In September, uh, looks the same, uh, we have a data day on the twentieth at the end of September, just like we do this year, to look at our data. In October, we're going to continue with our district-wide, um, parent-teacher conferences on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then in November is the Thanksgiving break with Wednesday and Monday as a holiday. And then December, of course, is, is the Christmas holiday that goes into, uh, January first on Wednesday in January. The tenth, uh, is a data day at that time. We have a data day then, because that's our mid-year assessments we do on all of our students. So we take a lot of time that day to look at how our students are performing at that point of the year. The Monday, the twentieth, is the Martin Luther King holiday. However, I will share that it is the first snow day, it's snow makeup day, all right? In February, again, we have another data day on the fourteenth, and then the seventeenth, I think that is, is also President's Day, which is a day off. That'll be the second snow makeup day. March, uh, there's a data day on the twentieth, uh, three-hour early dismissal. And then in April, that Easter weekend, Friday is, uh, the Good Friday, and Monday is part of the Easter holiday. Monday is the third snow makeup day. So those three holidays build in three snow makeup days. Then when we get to May, Friday, the twenty-second, uh, of Memorial Day weekend, will be the last student day. And that is Memorial Day weekend, graduation is scheduled for that night. So we will, kids will be done, teachers will be done, we will graduate that night. The goal is to have the building empty, staff, students, as of then, and turn the buildings over to construction. Then the following week, right now, uh, the Tuesday and Wednesday will be the two final, uh, teacher and service days, most likely not in the intermediate school and high school, so we will have to be somewhere else at one of the elementary schools. And then added snow makeup days for the rest of that week, pushing those teacher days off, and into the next week. Um, but, that, and, and that's how it's listed on the calendar on the bottom. And the purpose for that is, so teachers and families don't go plan a vacation either the week af, especially that week after, that first week of June. Um, and don't go schedule any kind of holidays or anything for them. So we want them to have them as snow makeup days. That being said, we did not schedule any act eighty time next year, and we changed our calendar, if you're, or our schedule this year, especially at the intermediate school, and so we have more than enough instructional time that should we need additional snow days, we can turn our in-service days in the summer into act eighty days and count them as student days. So the goal would be to use the three holidays, then go back and use three of the days from the first August, that buys us six snow makeup days, hoping not even to get past, um, that very last week in May. So if you look, so that's the plan for next year, if you look at the very bottom of the calendar on the left. We put this on there so everyone was aware of this. For the following school year, the year we open the new high school, the twenty twenty-one school year, the first student day will be Wednesday, September ninth. Tuesday, September eighth, will be the cler, teacher clerical day, and teacher in service will be the week before Labor Day. And then, right now, the, how that works out is the last student day turns out to be Thursday, June tenth. So, so far, that looks pretty good. So we wanted all this in the calendar so we can publish this, and we wanted to do it this early so parents are aware how early school is going to start. Now, it is a couple days earlier, not much. I shared this with the entire staff, I only got two pieces of feedback. One is that, and this one's also wrong, is that the snow makeup day, the teacher, last teacher days would always be at the end of the snow makeup days, and so we have it marked wrong on this, uh, but we have a correct version that we will bring for board approval. And the only other comment I received was having the kids start sooner and building in more holidays during the school year. Um, we just didn't wanna bring the kids any earlier than that, we thought that was early enough for the students. So that is the calendar that is going to be brought for board approval. If you have any questions for me now, or any questions during the next month, uh, just let me know. But talking to Dave and the architect, we think this is exactly what we need to do to get the most time that summer. Because remember, we have to build in packing time. Right now, um, we typically have three early dismissal days in the entire district, final exams, and we did last year with the entire district. Uh, what I'm looking at is probably five days of early dismissals for that very last student week, where teachers can pack up in the afternoon. Uh, maybe we can get some athletes to help us move some boxes and do some things like that. And then for unpacking, teachers can unpack when we get back in August. So we have to build those things in as well, uh, and just kind of getting the building up and running. Any questions? All right, if you think of any, just drop me an email.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the second, um, excuse me, item we, we talked about, Mrs. Tice, um, Mrs. Landis, presented a, um, global read-aloud project. And, uh, global is exactly what it means. Um, basically what they'd like to do is, this is a six-week initiative where, um, students from around the globe get together, and they read a book, uh, these same books, so one book, uh, throughout the world. Um, and then what, uh, what they would like to do is get together with, um, students in different parts of the country. I believe Mrs. Darbola was somebody from Alaska? Texas, okay. Um, Mrs. Tice was, uh, from Illinois, and, do we have somebody from Alaska?
Canada.
Canada, okay. I knew some up north, where it's cold. Um, and then the idea is, what would happen is, they would, uh, ha, the, the students would get together with students in these other classrooms and discuss the book. So, give them an idea, excuse me, an opportunity to. So, give them an idea, excuse me, an opportunity to, to get a different worldview of, of students that aren't from Dover, Pennsylvania. Where a lot of times, a lot of our students are very isolated to the Dover area and South Central Pennsylvania area. So having that, that different, you know, urban versus rural type, type setting. So again, they're excited about it. It sounds very interesting to me. And, you know, hopefully, I, I just asked Mrs. Tice that when the, when they're done their six-week period, I would ask her to come back and let us know how, how it worked out, how the students felt about it, and go from there. And then the next thing we talked about was the comprehensive planning that we are gonna be starting into. Basically, moving forward, our committee meetings will become comprehensive plan committee meetings. And we will start that at our next committee meeting date. And we'll be moving, start, moving our, our start time up to 5 o'clock and working from 5 to 7 on most days. And we'll be meeting in the Dover Elementary Library. And the only time that we will be meeting as a curriculum committee is if we have something of, of a curricular nature that we need to discuss. So we did talk about the meeting dates that were established. And then also, the kickoff meeting ideas were shared with us. And then, I think that was it. Sorry, me and technology don't get along very well. Oh, that's right, we did, and then we talked about the Curriculum Advisory Council, where they, they talked about the upcoming curriculum writing, data analysis, data planning. That's gonna happen for this year. It is very, what do I wanna say, aggressive? It's a very aggressive schedule. But it sounds to me, from what I, I'm gathering, everybody, teachers, staff, are very excited with the process. They're very excited about having the opportunity to get together. And as Mr. Cobb said, kind of get some of that ground-up feedback as far as the, the curriculum. So hopefully, again, as the year progresses, we'll hear some more positive feedback on that. And then just the last thing here, upcoming next week, we have the Jimmy Cass, Cassus? Is that what it's, Cassus? Program as well, some high schools, high school suicide awareness in the afternoon for the, again, for the, for the high school. And then Jackie Fox math consultation and the district data protocols coming up. That was a really quick overview. Mrs. Herman, Mrs. Mailey, I know, Mrs. Herman, you took some copious notes. Anything that you want to add to that?
No, I'm fine, you did a good job, thank you.
That's all we have.
Questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, thank you. Human and Fiscal Resources, Mr. Cook.
On our agenda tonight, we had several items here to bring to your attention. First item was Policy 702.1. If you recall, Tuesday night, we had approved the Gifts, Grants, and Donations Policy 702. Next step in that implementation of that policy is 702.1, which is called Crowdfunding. Basically gives some, some guidelines in how those types of processes take place. There needs to be a process in place, which I, I wasn't here, so I don't know how much description or understanding there was. But there needs to be some, some processes that are implemented so that there's some, some safety and protection, both to us as a district and to the individuals that might be soliciting funds and that sort of thing. So, very well-meaning, very well-intended intents there to, to secure some funds to help bridge some gaps. And just need to have a little bit of understanding, you know, and, and some things in place that help protect everyone involved. So that policy will be going to the policy committee for review to kind of get that all worked out before it comes back to us for approval. We also talked about the audit, which is taking place right now for our 2017 and 18 budget year, which currently we're in 18, 19, but we're still working through the auditing process. That's taking place, it will continue to take place. The timeline on that is to have it done and presented to the state by October 31st. But more realistically, there are some extensions granted. Usually, it runs into November till everything can get tweaked and worked out. So that's a more realistic timeframe for it. So far, so good. There's a few tweaks being, you know, implemented at this point in time. The Skyward program that's been implemented, there's a lot, been a lot of data merging and, and from old systems to new systems. So there's some changes that have taken place that will continue to need to be tweaked there. One thing we, we talked about at length, in that 2017-18 budget year, if you recall, we had looked and anticipated that we would be ending the year with a deficit. There are some things that are totally unforeseen. As is always the case, there are things that in your best estimate of preparation and expectations, there's things that you don't expect. One of those things that showed up here at the 11th hour as part of this process is our Lincoln Benefits Trust. We had a, a good year, so to speak, and not as much need for those funds that have been put back and in reserve for that type of situation. So, we had already budgeted for this year, the, taking a funding holiday for one month as part of this year's budget. But looking back in, in 1617, we had an exceptionally high year, where a lot of funds were distributed for that. This past year, it was over a million dollars less. So how does that translate? That money ends up in fund balance and looks like, you know, we have less of a deficit at the end of the year than what we thought we were gonna have. And so, the way it's looking right now, again, it's in progress, progress, but as Jen shared, it looks like we might end up at a bad break even, which would be a huge, you know, a huge positive. So, more to come on that. And you'll be hearing more about that as time goes on. We also talked about the budget process. It's currently underway. About 600 responses to the survey that's been distributed have already come in. This budget survey is done a little bit more in a, in a generality, from a generality standpoint, it's a little earlier in the process than what we did last year. So it's getting out to the community, the community's weighing back in. So 600 responses at this point in time is, is pretty good, I, I think. And I think that was the general consensus as well from the committee. As we get further along in the budget process, there might be another survey sent out. Not for sure, but it might be a little more detailed at that point. But I mentioned about Skyward being implemented here this year. And in that process, it's hopefully gonna make the budget process easier as principals can now, instead of doing things on paper, go online and be able to, to do some of their requests and, and needs through, through the computer. So it should streamline that process a little bit. We talked, I'm assuming you talked, I wasn't here, I apologize, but I wasn't here Tuesday night, but talked about the, the state index of 2.3 percent, which for next year, in the budget process, our adjusted Act 1 index would be 3.1. What makes the change there? We talked a little bit about why there's a change between the state index and our, our numbers. It, it has to do with demographics, has to do with low-income families. And when all that formula is put in there, it might adjust. And for us, it does, it takes it from 2.3 to 3.1. What that amounts to is we can raise taxes up to 3.1 without going to referendum, without going to the, to the community. That doesn't mean that's what we're gonna do, but that's the state guidelines that says that we can do it up to that point. Did I miss anything? No? Okay, alright.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Cook? Okay, board members, do you have anything else for the good of the order tonight?
I just have one thing. I didn't look at the calendar for this year, but if we get any amount of snow like we've been getting rain, do we have snow days that we can cover?
Yep, we're built, we have built-in snow days, and we can take additional act 80 time if we want to.
It's gonna dry up here in the next month.
That's exactly right.
What'd you say? It's gonna dry up in the next month and we're gonna have nothing for the rest of the winter.
Right, that's exactly right.
Okay, whatever you say.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, this is our last public comment period for items on or off of the agenda. It's two minutes. If you have anything like to comment on, please come to the microphones. Okay, with that, our future meetings, October 16th will be our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. October 18th will be the board committee meetings at 6:00, and our board planning meeting at 7:00. So if there's nothing else for the agenda tonight, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, yes? Yes, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.